All right, I'll call tonight's work meeting to order. Entertainer motion to adopt the agenda.
Make motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have our agenda. Item number three, discussion of a conduit bond issuance proposal. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the May first, 2023 work meeting, City Council received a presentation from the city's bond council, Dorsey and financial advisor Ellers regarding their request for the city's participation in conduit bond financing for the proposed purchase of the Cambia Hills facility by Nexus Family Healing. The presentation by Dorsey and Ellers reviewed the process and procedures for the issuance of the bonds. Both explained the legal considerations and assured that the city would have no liability exposure if it should decide to be the host city for the issuance. ISD-15 school superintendent Carsten Anderson spoke in support of the need for the service to be provided by Nexus with had concerns regarding charges for rent, state reimbursement, and the ISD's cost for out-of-district students and staffing for districts' provided services. City council members questioned if there would be additional costs formed by the school district to support these services. Negotiations are underway to resolve these matters. Meeting was held in May nineteenth, 2023, and on June first to go over these things along with several other discussions between Nexus and ISD-15. I did have a conversation with Mr. Anderson today. He indicated that not everything was worked out, but everything was progressing well. He said that Nexus was a great group to work with and they were trying to resolve the issues that were presented. The potential impact of ISD-15 and any costs related to this item that are currently being discussed by Nexus and the school district are included in attachment two in your packet and also by an email that I sent out late this afternoon. And the printed copy of that is before you. The school district has been requested to provide comments on their current discussions with Nexus, and we did receive this from them this afternoon. Although the city of Ham Lake declined to participate as a co-partner in the conduit bond issuance, the Anoka County Finance Committee, composed of Commissioners Matt Look, Julie Brassstedt, and Jeff Reinert, approved the Nexus's request to be the second bond conduit partner behind East Bethel. The committee showed a high level of support for their service and understood the value the conduit bond program could bring to the project. The committee expects their recommendations to receive all county approvals. From the presentation made to City Council on May twenty-second, 2023, Nexus is coming to East Bethel either with or without the approval of the conduit bond financing. The difference between the two scenarios is that without the conduit bond financing, Nexus would have a higher cost of borrowing, which a portion would be passed along to the school district and higher costs for classroom, mental space, and other chargeable expenses for the educational component of their service. Approval of the conduit bond financing would result in lower cost to ISD-15 as opposed to taking no action on this consideration. The public hearing for this matter is still scheduled for June twelfth, 2023. The legal notices for the advertising of the hearing have been resolved. Attachment one of your proposals is an outline that was provided by Dorsey at our May twenty-second meeting and outlines the process and answers questions as to liability. And also a summary of discussions is provided as attachment two, which was the first meeting that Nexus had with ISD-15. The second one is the attachment that's on your desk now. The city may charge the borrower an issuance fee for its services in connection with the bond financing. This fee is to be negotiated should the bond be approved. If the city issues the proposed bonds, the borrower will be required to pay all direct and indirect expenses of the city and indemnify and hold the city harmless against any liability related to the issuance of the bonds. As the city's bond council, Dorsey would prepare the bond documents and represent the city's interest in the financing, but the cost as well as fees would be paid by the borrower. Tonight's meeting is for a discussion to answer or find answers to any remaining questions council may have regarding the requests by Nexus relating to city's participation in the conduit bond issuance for this project. We also have Margaret Bymont, Vice President of Service Development of Nexus, as president to answer any questions council may have.
All right. Do we have any questions right away, or would we like, is it Margaret? To come up and give a little update on her end?
I just want to go through that.
Yep, yep, right there.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. So, the one thing that Nexus would like to do to just underscore what Jack had said is that we really would encourage the council to separate out the issues that have to do with the educational impact of the program for the youth and the conduit bond issue because we have been encouraged at a meeting, I guess about a year and a half ago and recently to reopen this facility for youth. And so the decision to reopen the facility for youth and our work with the Department of Human Services to do that is something that's on its own timeframe and is proceeding. And we are working very closely with Superintendent Anderson to work out the educational programming, to look at the options so that the impact is minimized to the community. We just would encourage the council to separate that out from the support of the conduit financing support because the conduit financing only allows all costs to Nexus to be lower. It allows us to take advantage of what's available for nonprofits that are doing mission-driven work to receive funding that's about a percent lower. So that's a, ends up being about thirty-seven million dollars over the course of the loan. So it allows us to pay less interest and allows all the costs to be less, including what will be the the cost of the educational space for for the local school district. So it's in, we we believe it's in our common best interest to keep the costs for the loan as low as possible. And we will continue to work with Superintendent Anderson. There's various options as far as educating the youth and we're doing, really working hand in glove with him and his staff to figure out the best option for the educational program for the for the youth.
Margaret, would you like to go over the results of the meeting that you had with the school district last Thursday?
Sure. So we've had a couple of meetings with what they call intermediate school districts. Superintendent Anderson and the district have a couple of options as far as the educational program. So one is to do it themselves and to hire the staff and to work on all the billing and financing for educating kids that come from another district. One of the things that we did find out through the Eric Bartusch, who is St. Francis Schools Director of Business Operations, and one of the things that he was able to tell us last Friday in our meeting was that we we found out that actually the only issue for the district are the kids that would be actually receiving special education services. So for kids that come in that wouldn't have special education services, all of the costs of educating those kids are billed back to their home school district. And that would be everything, the administrative costs, the school costs, teaching staff, as well as the lease.
Can I, that was a question that I had. What about the kids with IEPs?
Right, so with IEPs, that would be the other group of special ed students, and that's where the concern is. That those costs-
So we don't have any answer on that yet?
Well, there will be impact. I don't think that Eric, the Director of Business Operations, knows exactly what that would be. And they're working that out now. We have found out from other facilities in the state as well as the previous, when the Hills was running Cambria Hills, it's about fifty percent. So we did find out that the concern is only about fifty percent of the youth that would be there, not the whole student population. Also, keep in mind that our population will be lower. So our capacity will be forty and our average daily census will be thirty-four. So we're really talking about what would the impact be of about seventeen special education students? So we know it's much smaller than perhaps was feared to start with. One of the other options, and the reason why we've been having a series of meetings with other, what they call intermediate districts, is that another option that the district has is to have what they call an intermediate district or a co-op actually provide education for the kids. And then they would handle all of the billing, all of the collections and all of that, and would provide all the teachers. And it has some clear advantages because it would remove some of that stress that Superintendent was concerned about, about hiring more teachers when there's a strain on getting enough teachers for the local school district. And all of that would be handed over to the intermediate district. So we've had meetings with two of those alongside the superintendent. One, of course, last Friday was the intermediate district that provided the educational program when the Hills ran it. So that's one nineteen. And they said that they are not in a position to do that because they are not accepting new members at this point. But they were very generous in sharing all of the details of the program and will remain in a consultation fashion if we wish. The other one that is still still in play is the Metro Northeast District. And we had a conference call with that superintendent. And they are open to considering this, and as I understand it, Superintendent Anderson was going to have a conversation with him today. But I didn't hear if that happened or what the result was. So I believe the superintendent is weighing options as far as St. Francis doing it themselves, engaging with an intermediate district, and what would the impact be of one versus the other so they can make the best choice for the community?
Do we have any other questions for Margaret?
What we got from Jack was this seems to be a mock-up of a conditional use permit or something like that. But this thing has to be completely gone over again because it's it's identical to what was written for Cambia.
Yes, and there are-
Sixty, sixty-bed facility and seventy-two beds, anything over seventy, yeah, it's all gotta be-
It's all, so, yeah, I received that this afternoon and made a couple of marks and was gonna send that back to Jack just from our perspective because there are some, something, really, it's just the number of beds is lower for us. The age range is slightly lower, slightly higher than they had. They had said that they would concentrate with ten-year-olds to twelve-year-olds. We believe it's going to be more in the twelve to sixteen range. And apparently there was one other item in there, but yes, we do need to custom that to make it relevant for our circumstance.
Yeah, that was one of the plans, to review that and take, to make it more suitable to run with the property rather than a particular owner of the property.
Right, right. Now, some of the uses of the building and the description of the gem and the land and the recreation area, all of that seems still right on point, but there are some key, key things that need to be tailored.
Yep, yep, and we'll be reviewing that at a future meeting. I'm not sure which one yet. But before everything is approved, that's one of the items.
Right, good.
Do we, do we know when Superintendent Carsten Anderson, is it?
Mm-hmm, yes.
His name's Carsten, I wasn't sure about the last. When he's gonna have it to a point that he can come here and give us a direct presentation firsthand?
You know, I I would just be speculating. I know that when we talked on Fri- Thursday, he had said, I have graduation, so I'll be able to make up that follow-up phone call on Monday. And then he has some decisions to make about what does he, you know, how does he want to handle this? I put in my write-up too, presumably, I mean, these are not the only two intermediate school districts, so presumably there may be other places he could make inquiries. These are the two where we had some networking connections with those superintendents and could set up the meetings.
What's your backstop plan if none of them are able to to step up and deal with it, I mean?
Well, we're trying to support Superintendent Anderson as best we can, but the provision of the educational program is completely beyond our jurisdiction and purview. So we're the, we're the mental health provider.
But you're, but you're subject to the constraints that he faces, you know?
Right, the provision of the educational program will be the responsibility of St. Francis, whether they contract with someone else or the, or keep that work themselves. And so we're here to be as good a partner as we can, but the decision about how to do that and whether or not to keep it in the district or to have a co-op do it is something that we're trying to make sure, if we know any access to other options, that we make, we share those with superintendent. But the decision about how to handle that resides with the district.
Yeah, from where we're sitting, it's just a lot of black holes, you know? That's, and we're, our job is to do due diligence for the people of East Bethel, so black holes make us nervous.
Right, yeah. Yeah, the only thing I would say that I had led with was that I think it's important to not mix the issues of the conduit loan and the educational program just because they really aren't related to one another. The, the, bringing the program to the community was something that the community invited back in two thousand and eighteen, that we had an empty building. We actually threw some meetings with the community. We're told that the community was still highly supportive of bringing the youth program back. So that building was put back to its original use. And so it was in that spirit and faith that Nexus came forward and became a willing partner in that. So we were unaware of the educational issue when we, you know, when we came forward, we're the mental health provider. But because we want the best for the youth, we want to partner with every constituency in the community to make it work all around.
Right, yeah. And I believe it is still the view of the city to be a supportive partner in, in this endeavor.
It's so desperately needed in the state, so we're really glad to hear that. And we're glad to have a community that is civic-minded, that there's a concern about having this this much-needed resource for the youth in Minnesota.
If I could ask Jack a couple of things, if you don't mind. We, while you were out in the hallway, we were, I mentioned that the CUP that you had copied here has to be updated to their situation because the numbers, you know, sixty residents instead of thirty-six and seventy-two beds instead of whatever the appropriate term for for their CUP would be. So this would need to be edited. And along that line, what is the, I'm, I'm not, I've never written, read through a payment in lieu of taxes agreement or whatever the proper term for it is. If there, was there one for Cambia?
That's correct.
And if there is, where is it?
I can send that to you. There was one that was approved, passed, adopted, recorded. And that one was calculated based on property values of that site, if it could be cut up into three lots versus what taxes it would produce versus what the estimated cost of services were. I don't think we can use that now. What we're doing now is we're calculating what our cost of services are for servicing Nexus in terms of police, fire, and public works. And we're getting costs from the Sheriff's Department on how many calls they had, the Fire Department, how many calls they've had, and average incidents of snow plowing or service to that. I don't have all the numbers, but what we have, it's getting close to what the cost was for Cambia Hills, which is about forty-five hundred dollars a year. Now, that cost was also predicated on them not losing money. So if they have to file a form with us each year as part of their audit to show what their financial statement was. So in that case, if they didn't make any money for the year, they did not owe any payment in lieu of taxes. But if they did exceed that break-even figure, then that number then was applicable. But I can send that to you tomorrow.
Well, I think we'd all want to see it. Are we taking any steps as a city to inform the people who live closest to the facility of the upcoming public meeting?
That hasn't been done yet, but we'll notice that on the website, that there will be a public hearing, and we'll put it out on the Facebook. And any of those that are on the email blast, we can do it, or we can actually send them a letter out tomorrow, and they should get it by Thursday.
I think that's advisable because, and I'll tell you why. Mark, I don't know if you know about all the background. I'm catching up myself. I wasn't involved very much back then. But there was a lot of blowback from the residents nearest to this facility when it was proposed. There were some contentious meetings and stuff like this. I've just heard about them. I wasn't at them. But I just, one thing I really want to make sure is that the residents who are closest to the facility site have a chance to learn about what's being planned and have a chance to express their opinions, you know? So that's, seems like, seems like a straightforward thing to do, you know? So.
Yeah, I had heard that third-hand. I had heard also that there hadn't been negative community impact from the youth that lived at the facility. So I don't know if that ended up revising people's opinions about it or not.
Yeah, as with, which is true of most people, the anticipation was worse than the reality, I suppose. But I think, I think a lot of it came down to property values, not necessarily physical fear, you know, but stuff like that, you know, but.
I was at a couple of them meetings, and there's a lot of people that were angry with it. So it wasn't just soft-spoken. I was at the church on a couple of them, and I'll tell you, it was almost a fistfight on a lot of it. So there's a lot of people that were against it, so it's important that we do get the message out to the neighbors and let them know what's going on.
If there's anything that you need from Nexus in that communication, besides being here next Monday, we're happy to participate in any way.
That's fine, too.
Well, what do we need to do to see that a letter from the city just advising people in that immediate area, not just the property across the street from the facility in that adjacent neighborhood, but, you know, within a reasonable area around the facility at least, are aware of this? Letters going out?
How far do you want to define that area that we send the letters out?
Well, I hadn't thought that through.
You know?
Less than, less than a hundred miles and more than a hundred feet. How about that?
Half-mile, mile?
Something like that, yeah. And I was just over there on, over the weekend, riding around, looking in the neighborhoods and all that. It's not densely populated people, other than the house across the street in that adjacent neighborhood, aren't really on top of it or anything. But I just want to go the, because I believe people were not heated the last time, I kind of want to go the extra effort of advising people. So if they have concerns, they can show up and have them addressed. That's all.
I'm thinking, is there a flyer or something we can make up, Jack? I mean, if you can get some made up, I'll go put them in people's paper boxes so we know they got them. And the city doesn't have to waste money on postage and stuff like that, too.
Waste Jim's time instead.
I'll do it. I'll do it because it's important that we make the right decision on this whole thing because the last time turned out not good. So we need to take all precautions that we need to do this right.
One of the, and along that line, doing it right, should this go, once the conditional use permit is drawn up with the proper numbers and everything? Should that go to the planning commission?
This doesn't have to go to the planning commission. It's not a land use issue.
Well, last, last time it did.
Well, the conditional use permit was a part of the land use that time. But since we're not changing the terms of it, we're just altering the numbers to reflect this situation, then it doesn't have to go to anybody but City Council.
The use is essentially staying the same. The use, you're saying, the use, okay.
Jim, it's to your point. A lot of people don't have paper boxes, so I think it'd probably be better to send it out by mail if you want to contact everybody.
Yeah, I think that's fine, and it's not a huge expense or anything.
We need to do it, though, soon because the twelfth will be here real quick.
We'll get that out tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, that should be enough time.
Yeah.
Most of us don't have more than a seventy-two-hour memory anyway, so it's good for them to show up on Friday or Saturday.
Margaret, I got one question for you. You said that you had a meeting, and I don't know who it was with or where it was, that were positive about what you guys want to do. Where was that or when was it even?
Yeah, the first time I met Jack and the mayor at the time and the community development director was, boy, I know it was summer. I'm trying to remember if it was a year and a half, two years ago. And the gentleman that we're receiving, that was representing the owners of the building or the receivers of the building had set that up just as a meet and greet because at that point we were considering it.
Okay, so what you're saying then is basically you met with three, four people?
Right.
That agreed, okay.
It was-
I just want to make sure that's clear, and there was no meetings that a lot of people had voiced their opinion?
No, that was just a representative sample of the City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions, comments, discussion?
Yes, yes, there is. To help me understand this, if if we do this, it's going to save or potentially save taxpayers money or the impact. If we don't do this and you do it yourself, it's going to cost our taxpayers more money in the long run. Is that correct?
It, so, the reason why I can't say yes or no is because if you all deny the conduit financing, then Nexus needs to decide, will we delay to try to find another, another town to, just like we found Anoka County, to do that? Now, if you all approve, if you all, I think as the, they had explained at the original meeting, if you all say no to the conduit financing, but you say we can find another community to find it, you all have to give us permission to do that. But if you do, then we would have a choice. We can either move ahead with our current timing and then we pay a percent more, or we could go try to find another county or city to, to pick up the conduit financing, the ten million. So we would need to make that choice. If the time pressures of this indicate that we had to move forward, then yes, we'll be paying more for the loan. And the only way that that would impact East Bethel is that however the educational programming gets offered, there will be a cost for the space of the educational program, just like any educational space. And so our square, our cost per square feet will be higher if we end up paying the the increased interest. So that's why it's, it's a, it's an if then, because we have not said, well, if East Bethel turns us down, we are doing, you know, we're going to proceed at the higher rate. So we would have to make that decision, and the outcome of that decision would would determine whether or not it would impact you all or not. Does that, am I, am I saying that cogently?
Yeah.
Okay. And we do know that Anoka County's already approved the other six and a half million. And so we, this is, you know, if we get approval from East Bethel, then everything is clear to get the reduced rate moving ahead.
Did Ham Lake give you a reason why they were not proceeding with this?
I'll tell you, my information is secondhand, but I'll tell you what I heard secondhand. What I heard secondhand was that a member of the council met with the mayor and said that there was concern from the school, about the school district impact. And Ham Lake said if it's not popular in East Bethel, then we don't want to get, we don't want to support it. Now, this is all hearsay. I heard this second, third-hand.
Actually, that, initially, the conduit financing seemed like it would be the concern. That's the least of my concerns now. It's the school district.
Sure.
And, because we don't, we don't want this to come back and bite our residents, our citizens, who are already taxed plenty, to get bitten by this through a school levy.
It would be-
As, as politicians like to say, we want plausible deniability that we're responsible for that.
Yeah, well, it would be, I'm hoping that next Monday, that either Superintendent Anderson or the Director of Business Operations could talk about impact because as they've described it in front of us, it seems like that it's very much an if there would be impact, that there's various ways they can handle this, given the way their levies work every year and all of that. And when they were talking about worst-case scenario, it was coming down to a few dollars a year per citizen, if I understood them correctly. But that's important for you all to hear directly from them, like what are their options and what does that look like?
Well, yeah.
Right.
They're closest to the matter, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm listening intently, but educational financing is not my area of expertise, so.
Right.
Jack, do you need any more, just direction from council on this matter?
No, we'll get the letter of notification sent out tomorrow, and I'll give you all a copy of the pilot program that was adopted and enacted for Cambia Hills.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Margaret, for coming.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Item number four, electrical permits changed to state permit issuance and inspection. Jack?
Thank you, Brian. Prior to July twentieth, two thousand and eleven, all electrical inspections in the city were through the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry. At this time, a change in regulations relating to electrical inspections allowed East Bethel the option of contracting with an independent inspector or the Department of Labor for this service. The independent contractual option allowed the city to recover a percentage of the scheduled fees for these permits, work with the local inspector that could provide essentially same-day inspections and assure continuity of inspectors for the service. Brian Nelson, an East Bethel resident, was the city's electrical inspector and served in this capacity from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and eighteen. The city of East Bethel then contracted with electrical inspections to sloth inspections located in Andover, Minnesota. The city of East Bethel then contracted with electrical inspections to SLOTH inspections located in Andover, Minnesota. As independently contracting this service has experienced increased costs and the Department of Labor has improved their performance in this area, the difference between these two services is equalized and council's requested to evaluate our choices in the matter. The advantage of contracting electrical inspection service are and were, we received twenty percent of permit revenue to cover the administration costs for this services. The disadvantage of contracting the electrical inspection services are, there could be and is confusion as who to contact with questions for inspection. Sometimes the city gets called, sometimes the electrical inspector gets called, or sometimes the Department of Labor gets called. Also, cost of increase to residents for permits and scheduling inspections is usually only available two days per week. And the financial incentives for the city on this have been minimized. The advantage of going to Department of Labor are, administration of the entire process is no longer a responsibility of or a cost to the city. Electrical questions, permits and inspections are in one place for contractors and residents. Permit costs will now be less for contractors and residents. And with surrounding cities and counties using the same service, there are advantages and efficiencies in schedule that enable an increase in inspection availability with potentials for inspection to be offered up to four days per week. The disadvantage of contracting with the Department of Labor, there would be a loss of revenue in the amount of approximately forty-eight thou- four thousand eight hundred and forty dollars per year, based on twenty twenty-two receipts. And there could be some initial confusion with the transition to the new service, but this is something that can be compensated for as time goes along. In summary, there seems to be no additional conveniences or savings for residents, city or contractors that independently contracting, once provided. Blaine Spring Lake Park, Columbus, St. Francis, Ham Lake, Oak Grove, Bethel and Lindwood used the state for the electrical permitting. Of the twenty-one cities in Inoka County, only seven contract with an independent inspector. As the previous electrical inspector was a local residence, inspections were available four to five business days per week, with same-day inspections always a possibility. Since transition from Brian Nelson to SLOTH inspection, permit scheduling can be issued as inspection times are only available approximately two days per week. As certain cities' permits cannot be issued or work started until electrical inspections have been completed, this has delayed the issuance of certain permits or held up work in construction projects. The contract with SLOTH inspections may be terminated with or without cause, but either party with thirty days' notice. It should be noted the city is not dissatisfied with SLOTH inspections, but utilizing the Department of Labor will be of better value for those that require electrical inspection services. Staff is seeking direction from council as to continuing to contract with SLOTH inspections or change this service authorized to the Department of Labor and Industry.
Uh, Jack, with, uh, talking about the disadvantages contracting with the Department of Labor, uh, with estimated loss of annual revenue of approximately forty-eight hundred dollars, wasn't that revenue actually used to cover staff time dealing with electrical paperwork and permits?
That, that's correct.
So it actually wasn't really revenue, it's just was brought in to cover that service?
That, tha- that's correct. And, and with this, we think we'll be saving approximately fifty-five hundred dollars of staff time, which could allow that staff person to do extra work, because things are really picking up on that end.
Yep. Uh, any other discussion on, from A Wels?
Seems pretty straightforward, doesn't it?
So if that's the direction of council, we can contact Department of Labor. We'll have to pass a resolution and it'd take approximately four to six weeks to get this in operation on their side. And then any outstanding permits that were issued to SLOTH will remain with them until they're gone through with the final approval.
All right, is any issue with using the state for electrical inspections?
Nope, let's do her.
All right, let's move ahead, Jack. Uh, on to item number five, community development director position discussion.
City council reviewed the community development director position at our work meeting on April third, and there was discussion to keep Aaron Berg in the city planner position and set his pay at his current salary plus one thousand dollars per month additionally he's receiving for his interim director assignment. If we don't compensate this person for the responsibilities of the position at or near the market rate, finding employment elsewhere at a higher salary in this job market would be no problem. At the finance committee on May the tenth, the subject of the community development director's position was discussed and staff recommended it remain in the draft budget. As a result of discussion, it was suggested that staff make a case for retaining the position and present it to city council for consideration. The following is a brief summary of the history of the position and followed by the reasons for, should the council consider keeping this position. City council approved a change in title for the division head of this department on August fifteenth, two thousand and twelve, from city planner to community development director slash city planner to reflect the additional duties of the position, but the ordinance will not change to reflect this additional designation. In two thousand and fifteen, the title was eventually shortened to community development director and the community development department assumed the supervision of the functions of the building department. This was approved by the council with the adoption of the two thousand and fifteen budget on December third, two thousand and fourteen. Again, this was not changed in the city ordinance, section twenty-two, four, two, four at this time. With the resignation of Stephanie Hanson effective December ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, the East Bethel city council directed staff to advertise for the vacant community development director position.
One second. That should be two thousand and twenty-two, shouldn't it, for the resignation?
It should be. Tha- thank you.
'Cause I don't think December twenty-three is here yet.
Thank you, Jim. Uh.
Sorry about that.
That's no problem. I, I appreciate the correction. Uh, the position advertised twice and seven applications were received. Of these seven, only three met the qualifications and these were invited for interviews. Two days prior to the interview, two of the candidates withdrew. The remaining candidate was interviewed on March second, two thousand and twenty-three, and this person who met all the qualifications was recommended for approval for hire to the city council on March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, on March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, there was some discussion among the council as if there weren't enough choices for selection and this was recommended to be tabled for further discussion. The hire for and retention of this position is on, currently on hold for city council action on this matter. As it is difficult in the current labor market to attract qualified and dedicated employees, we have an employee who meets all the requirements for the job and has proven his ability. It would seem that this is a priority position for the city's staff. The city planner is a position that doesn't include all the responsibilities and duties required for the work that is currently needed and being performed. The city planner is more fo- focused with the mechanics of the permit variance and zoning processes. The community development director position encompasses a much wider variety of additional duties and involves a broader scope of responsibilities as indicated in attachments one and two for the job description of each position, and these detail the differences between the two. If there was to be but one full-time resp- person responsible for all the land use plan and business development for the city, the community development director position is more appropriate for addressing issues of a developing city than that of a city planner. Existing growth pressures require a higher degree of involvement and attention to prevent unintended or secondary consequences of developmental decisions. Demands on cities that are on a major highway in the metro area are more extensive than those municipalities that are not in areas that are becoming prime locations for development only require minimal services and have no city utilities. The city ordinance that establishes the community development department is chapter two in administration, article six, section two, four twenty-four, which has established a community development department and provides for a planning division and an inspection ordinance division. If council is on board with keeping and staffing the community development director position, city council's requested to consider that this ordinance be developed to read a community development director department, community development department is hereby established. The division head should be the community development director. The community development director shall be appointed by the city council based on the recommendation of the city administrator. City planning and zoning regulations, review of development proposals and other planning activities along activities related to economic development shall be under the supervision of the community development director. City building code enforcement, zoning ordinance enforcement and other code enforcement activities shall be under the supervision of the community development director and implemented by the building official. The size of the division shall be determined by the city council based on the recommendation of the city administrator. The community development director shall su- supervise the operation of the community development department, including all assigned personnel and be responsible for all equipment assigned to the division used in its act operation. The community development director shall prepare and file reports or may be requested, as may be requested by the city administrator. Uh, the fiscal impact of this is that, uh, in looking through different salary reports for this position, the one that I used here was ZipRecruiter, which says the average salary for a community development director in Minnesota is ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars per year. While ZipRecruiter is seeing salaries as high as one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars and as low as forty thousand dollars, the majority of the community development director salaries currently range between seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and one hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred, with the top earners making approximately a hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars annually in the state. The starting salary recommended for this position is eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars per year, which is seventy-seven percent of the metro average of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for cities in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar population range. These are based on Met Council two thousand and twenty-two salary surveys for comparative positions. This position has been included in the preliminary twenty-three budget. The city has a qualified candidate for this position who has shown that he's willing to take on additional responsibilities, has performed above expectations and should be compensated equal to the duties he has assumed. Staff request that city council consider a change to section two dash four twenty-four of the city code as described above, reopen the discussions for the hire of this position and provide directions to the staff as to their recommendation on the topic.
Discussion. Um, you guys got anything?
Personally, I don't, I don't see that we need to have that position filled. I see that Aaron Berg is doing a good job of what he is doing. And my thought is Stephanie's been gone for six months and we're still operating. And it's not like we're building insane where we need a person that's gotta take control of that part and has to instruct a building official, which I believe that's your job to be entitled. He's, works under you, right?
Currently, he works under the community development department.
Right, but I mean, he's under you, basically is what it is.
Well, e- e- everybody's under me, but he reports directly to the community development director and then.
Okay, so basically, we really don't have one right now. Just Aaron Berg is just kinda filling in like you said before.
He's, he, he's the head of them director and he is assuming all the duties Stephanie has currently.
Right, but he's still doing his own job as city planning.
Yeah, he, he is.
Explain to me then, how can you do two jobs when you're one person?
It's very difficult and.
Okay, then my suggestion would be you need to help him.
I am helping him. Ar- Aaron and I are doing the job of Stephanie. We're combining.
Okay, 'cause I remember you saying too, when Clean quit, you stepped in there and you helped run that as well.
I did for three or four months, but this is only temporary. You can't do this full-time because you're gonna have to neglect other things.
Then how can, how, how can you show us proof that that needs to be done?
I need to know what you guys are doing every day and how it affects, I mean, 'cause if he's doing the job of two people, how can that be?
Aaron and I are splitting Stephanie's duties up.
Okay.
So he's working extra, I'm working extra.
See, I'm trying to figure out, how do you, are you guys working overtime?
Well, yes.
On a Saturday or?
Yes, and Sundays.
So you are working overtime?
Yes.
So you're getting paid?
No, no, we, we, we don't get paid time. We don't get paid any from overtime.
I mean, so you have proof that you guys are working all these hours?
We got the time sheets, yes.
Okay, I'd like to see them.
Okay.
'Cause I mean, to me, it's like, I see if we were building out of control here and like, say if we were like Ramsey, Andover, something like that, I could understand it, but we're not.
Well, we're, we're getting ready to. That, that's a possibility that may face us, so we gotta be ready for that.
Do, do we wanna be proactive or reactive in our development?
You can't try and prepare for something that's, you're hoping is gonna happen, and it's not. You deal with it when it comes. You can't sit there and prepare beforehand. I mean, we have the staff right now that can take care of, if we have construction growth.
The, the, the problem with that, Jim, is though we're letting a, a lot of other things go. We're having to put them off so they're not addressed timely.
Like what?
A lot of code enforcement stuff is not being taken care of as it should be.
Code enforcement, okay.
I'm behind on getting the broadband stuff done and behind on the.
Now, don't we have somebody that does code enforcement?
We do, but code enforcement is very difficult. One, one person can't do it all. There has to be kind of two or three people. I have to help out too. I don't help out as much as Aaron does, but there's two or three people that are working on code enforcement.
Hmm. I don't know, 'cause I'd like to see the proof that everybody's really putting their effort in to do all this work.
And, you know, a, a lot of it is coming from my side and I'm not complaining, I'm not asking for anything. But I put in quite a, been putting in quite a few hours. I'll send you my time sheets.
Right, but I mean, you're, you're paid very well for doing what you do too.
I understand that, but that's, well, that's why I'm willing to totally help out and gi- give it my all.
That's good.
But Jack also has his own duties.
Oh, right, but I mean, we can all work together on this. That's what happens all the time. We don't have to hire another employee when we can do it inside the way it is now.
We.
But that, right now, it's only intended to be a Band-Aid.
Yeah. Th- th- this is only, this is only temporary, so.
Right.
Here, here, here's, here's the big, here's the issue that I see, Jim, is that we have a very good person that can fill this role, do a great job, but if we don't pay him for what he's doing, it's gonna be real easy for him to move on and find something else. And I don't know that we can find anybody with his qualifications in this job market to replace him.
Okay, so then if Aaron takes that position, then we gotta find a city planner.
Well, that's still up in the air. We haven't.
Well, no, there's no difference then. How can that be up in the air if you could just move him to a different job and his city planner job is open? Who's gonna do that?
We're gonna try and do it between all of us. That, that's one thing we're not discussing.
It's one problem at a time.
So in other words, you can't, all of you can't do the job of the city community director, but you can do it for the city planner?
No, it's, we're, we're doing.
That's what you just said.
No, no, I said what we're not, not doing, we're not gonna address the city planner position. We're gonna bring that up in the budget discussions, and then it would be up to city council to decide whether they wanna keep that position or not. We'll do, we'll do the other.
Okay, but don't.
Here, here, here's, here's what it is, Jim, is that Aaron is doing the work of a community development director, but he's only getting paid for what a city planner.
He's getting paid pretty well, I think.
For what, well, that, that, it, it depends on what the market is. And it's today, we lost four people last year to surrounding cities that left and went and got more paid for doing the same job. We're gonna have the same thing happen.
That's their choice.
So, we're, we're not paying him what another city would pay him. And if tomorrow he leaves, because I do know that other cities are calling our employees and trying to recruit them. If he leaves tomorrow, where does that put our community development?
So in other words, just give him a raise because we're afraid he's gonna leave?
No, because he's doing, no, because he's doing the job, because he's doing the job.
He's doing the job.
Really, in less than a year, when he had started out with seventeen dollars an hour, the way I understand it, less than a year's time, he's up to seventy-two thousand dollars all of a sudden, 'cause they gave him another thousand a month. So now you want another twenty thousand on top of that. Does that make sense? Not to me, it don't.
If you're doing the work and you're qualified and you've proven that you could do it, you have to pay that to get those people for that position.
Linda, explain to me, why would somebody take a job for seventeen dollars an hour if they have all this experience?
Because he didn't then. He was just starting out.
Well, yeah, but now you're telling me he's got all this experience.
Yeah, you can get a lot of experience in a year.
In a year's time? Come on.
Yeah.
Please get real.
I am real.
No, you're not. You're in another world.
No.
Doesn't work that way.
Yes, it does.
Not in government maybe, but not in the real world.
Aaron has, h- h- his experience is experiences as you don't get in school. He's been on a planning commission for five years. He's been chairman of a planning commission. He's been on the school board for four years. He's on the city council. He knows how the process works. He's got experience that you don't learn in textbooks. He's got a law enforcement background. He knows how to deal with people. He handles situations very, very well. I've watched him and he's done an excellent job. and he would be a great candidate to fill this position. I think this, if we're only gonna have one position, community development director or city planner, we need to have the community development director. We'll have to pitch in and do the rest of it.
Okay, but can we operate that way?
Yes, we can operate that way.
So if we give him this new title and he gets another twenty grand a year, we won't need a city planner?
Uh, not now. Eventually, we're gonna need a city, we're gonna need more staff eventually.
It just depends if we have the growth.
That, that's correct, so.
But I mean, we can't speculate that all of a sudden, we're gonna have this huge growth when there's whole countries in a mess right now. We can't afford to be spending residents' money on speculation that it's gonna happen.
This is gonna be cheaper to do it this way.
If we don't replace the city planner.
That, that's correct and the city planner then would only be hired if and when, like you say, this growth stuff comes up.
Okay, different story, okay.
I hate to interrupt you guys. You're having so much fun, but.
I just don't wanna waste the residents' money, I tell you, that's.
I understand and that's part of our job is that, part of our due diligence is.
Yep.
To not, uh, squander the residents' money, part of which is ours, so. Yeah, we're all on the same page there.
Yep.
Um, I thought it was appropriate for Aaron to have a full year in as city planner. Cause he just got nominated or he just appointed to that last July after being hired in June. And, uh, by the by, could I ask you one question? When did you know that Stephanie was gonna leave?
Uh, approximately two to three weeks before she resigned, yeah. May, may, maybe thirty days. I'd have to go back and look, but it was not six months or three months, anything like that.
As you know, I was involved in that, uh, meeting, you know, the hiring meeting. I've seen, I've misplaced Aaron's resume, but I've, I've seen it. And, uh, it's clear that he's, that he does have a lot of experience related to planning issues and being on planning commissions is not the same as doing the in-office work of looking up, you know, the, all the zoning comprehensive plan, the permits and all this other stuff. But I thought it was, I thought it was good for him to have a full year as the city planner. I just, you know, for questions like what Jim asked, which I think are legitimate. But do you, uh, but here's, here, I'll just, I'll just say this and I'll, then I'll be over it, okay? But I have one question, overriding question. And that is, in February, I talked to a woman named Julie Borr who works for the city of Ham Lake. And she's the, uh, building and zoning clerk for the city of Ham Lake. Ham Lake has approximately forty percent more people than we have and they're closer into the cities, so they're under more development pressure than we are, other things being equal. And they don't have a community economic developer, development person. And I asked her, I, I put it right to her. I said, well, how is it that you're able to do that? Given, you know, all the projects you have coming down the pike and she said, I work with the city administrator and the city engineer, the building official, and later in the process with the city attorney for documents and stuff. Says we get it done fine. And it's, it's always stuck in my head is, well, how, how is it they're able to do that? And we're not. That, and that's what perplexes me. And I, I like Aaron and I think Aaron's a conscientious guy, which is an important thing in an employee, is people that are conscientious about their work. You can't teach that. That's something innate in a human being and it's a valuable thing. Um, but I ju- I can't imagine how this, how you're, you're really gonna get rid of the city planner position or at least not have to hire someone as a, a, a a right-hand person for that, for him to take care of, if, for lack of a better term, the grunt work of filling out all the, doing all the zoning research and filling out, uh, all the relevant documents and stuff like that.
Well, one thing, he is super efficient in doing that. Again, I think that's based on his planning commission experience. He's been through all this. He's very good with research. He's very organized and he's shown that he can handle that task. And I, I did talk to Ham Lake and I did have, I do have that job description and if you'd like, I can give that to you, but it doesn't compare anything at all to what we expect out of our city planner slash community development director.
Well, no, because the other people that I mentioned are doing the other pieces of it. The city administrator is a liaison with the chamber of commerce and the, with the Met Council and all that kinda stuff. It's the other people doing other parts of it instead of that community economic development person. But Julie was very clear that that's how they make it work. It's by working as a, as a group instead of one individual having this massive responsibility.
And essentially, that's what we do too. We work as a group with myself, Aaron, even Stephanie was here and then with Aaron. Uh, the one thing, and you know, I don't wanna speak what Ham Lake's visions are. They have their own. That's entirely theirs. But, uh, they don't have these developments that are coming forward with the two-hundred unit housing developed with the five-acre commercial project, potential three to four-hundred unit housing development where the golf course is, the can be hill stuff. They don't have those issues. We're, we're dealing with higher intensive growth pressure issues than Ham Lake is. And Ham Lake is essentially almost built out along the corridor too. Uh, theirs are more for rural residential type subdivisions, so I think it's comparing the two is kinda apples to oranges at this point.
Hmm. I don't know.
Now, the, the big difference is Ham Lake doesn't have sewer and water. We do and we have a two million dollar reserve capacity loan that I'd like to put off as much as possible.
Well, at least it's gonna be capped this year at the, at the latest next.
But I'd like to put that off as much as possible and.
What do you mean? I'm, I'm misunderstanding. I'll, put it off. What do you mean?
Uh, as long as we keep up with our ERUs, with our connections, that delays paying that. So if we have lots of development.
Yeah, see, that's the, that, I, I kinda figured that's, that's a driving issue in this city and it's, it's the, it's when something happens and then it creates a lot of follow-on decisions because it happened. That's the downstream effects of what happened in twenty-ten.
Yeah.
That's the downstream effects of it.
But it's here and we have to deal with it.
Yeah, but you gotta, you gotta strike a balance between, do we let it drive our decision-making? Or is it just something we're cognizant of, well, we don't let it drive our decisions, you know?
In, 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 in this case, we're in the best of two worlds if you owe two million dollars. In that it's capped at two million.
I wanna hear this explanation. I gotta hear this.
It can't, it can't go over that, which is the good thing. But as, as Brian said, if we continue to have development, then that means that we don't have to start paying on this. And eventually, if we had enough, which we won't, then it could actually pay for this whole loan itself.
Yeah. Which we won't.
You know, there, there's gonna become a point in time that the, the city is gonna build out down in the area where there's water and sewer. And then unless the city wants to expand their services, then we're, we're, we're pretty well out, out of real higher density type development options.
Alright.
But again, and, and I'll, I'll put in one more plug for Mr. Berg and I'll, I'll be quiet. But I think Mr. Berg is an exceptional employee. Uh, I would hate to lose him because we're not paying him for actually what he's doing. And I think it'd be a great loss to the city if we left him, if he left at this point, so.
Essentially, he has a years' experience of how the city works, who the people are, what it does, who does what. Uh, that's, he's got a very large jumpstart on if we start with somebody else that it's gonna take them a long time to come up to speed with a lot of things. And that's where one advantage of Mr. Berg starting as a city planner, he got to get all that experience when, uh, Stephanie resigned. Uh, he stepped up to the plate to do more work. Um.
It's called a bath of fire, isn't it?
Yeah, pretty much.
You give money for it though, too.
Pretty much, yeah. So when we did hire him, he did have a lot of, uh, call it book smarts, book learning, uh, some experience already from being on planning commissions. What the year has given him is, call it real-world experience where it's been actually filling in a lot of gaps. That is why he's been able to pick up speed so much and pick so much up that the last year has really been valuable for him. And for the work that, for the work that he is doing right now uh, and for the experience and the, call it investment that we've put into him already, I would really, really like to retain him. It would be, it would be bad. It would put the city back if he were to leave right now and i- if we do not pay him what he's worth, I fear that he may leave because in this job market, you can go anywhere and get more money for what he is doing right now than what we are paying him. And if he leaves, where does that put our community development? Who else do we have back there? We have our receptionist and we have a building official and a building inspector. And while Jack can step in and help out, it is not his job to be community development director.
And, and again, to your, your point too, Kevin, about some of the job descriptions, about liaison to the chamber of commerce and Met Council. He's gradually doing some of that. Again, this is a team effort, so when one person is coming up with time shortages, then we bring in myself. I volunteer to help on any way I can with him. Uh, we have the building official that can help out some and we have the administrative assistant in that department that can help out some too. City engineer, you know, we consult with him all the time to get, uh, information that we need for projects in the same way with the city attorney. So we're following the same process at Ham Lake, but I feel it may be just a little bit higher level and one that's got a little bit more pressures to it.
Let me ask, uh, my specialty is pointing at the gorilla in the, in the room and asking a question about it. Is Aaron willing to, to resign from the Cambridge City Council if he's made?
I have not broached him on that, but.
Do you wanna talk to him about that, please?
I, I would say that he would, I don't know if he'd wanna resign, but I'm sure that he would make it a point that this would be his priority. And, uh, we can talk to him about, uh, conflicts with council meetings.
Yeah, I mean, that's, most people would, I know we've had this conversation before, but most people would have an issue with that. I think, at least they've had an issue with it to me. You know, they're. Okay, I think.
So what Kevin brought up, and you keep saying a team, Jack, the people that, cause they don't have a community development director. We have the same people on the same team is what you're saying, right?
Correct.
So then how do they do that without it?
Because Ham Lake's issues are not as involved as ours are.
Why are issues so big?
Because we're having more growth pressures here than Ham Lake, many more.
Really?
We have sewer and water and that allows for higher density.
Sewer and water, that's all you hear about is sewer and water. Big deal.
Well, you know, we, we do and that's what we're trying to do and, uh, you know, it's, so that we have to deal with it. It's what?
It's an excuse is what I hear.
Well, it's, we have been given this issue, so we gotta make the best of it.
Right.
And we gotta do it to facts so we can generate as, the revenues we need to pay off, so we don't put any more burden on the city taxpayers.
I understand that. So is every business in East Bethel over there hooked up to the city sewer and water?
We have two that we're still working on, one that we're gonna have to issue a citation to.
Just two?
Yep.
Other than that, everybody else is hooked up?
Correct.
Really? Okay. That's all I got.
So do we have any direction to go on this matter?
As long as we don't need to hire a city planner immediately and we have enough people to take care of that as well without hiring that position too, cause that's what, seventy-some thousand just for that one?
Yeah, that would be, and then there's between what we, we would be saving approximately another seventeen thousand dollars from what Aaron has proposed to be paid.
Seventeen thousand on top of that seventy-two?
Yes, so there's about ninety thousand.
But we have enough people in the office that can help with that part of it at this point?
We do. And again, Aaron and I will make that work. I mean, there's no, there's no problem with, with, I can see on that end. We, we can get by with it as long as we're going along with this pace. However, just be advised that if development starts ramping up, then we're gonna have to look at some other, other options.
I understand that.
And I don't feel bad about asking all these questions because Aaron sits on a city council. He asks exactly the same questions up in Cambridge.
Cause don't get me wrong, Aaron, I think he's a good guy, but I just, like I said before, I don't want us wasting taxpayers' money when we have people that we can do the job without hiring more than we need to.
I think this would be a benefit to the taxpayers because we're getting a solid A-one individual who knows how to do the work, who's dedicated and he will get the job done.
And is Aaron willing to say that he'll work for us for the next twenty years without looking at anywhere else for a job?
He's got to sign a twenty-year contract.
We'll, we'll see what we can do to get that commitment.
No, I'd feel better about that, no.
Okay.
Definitely, but I'm only one person, so.
No, I feel the same way. Uh, when you talk about eliminating one job or bringing on a new person, we never got into the discussion where we were gonna replace that position. This is a huge difference in making a decision, cause I like Aaron too and I want the best people that we can have working in this city. To explain it now, how we just brought it out, that's key. I mean, I feel comfortable now, just like I think, you know, we, we're, we're talking about it now. I didn't feel comfortable before. As much as I like Aaron and think he's doing a good job, I, I'm looking at, okay, we're putting someone new here. We're not new, we're bumping them up. What about that seat? That was the big question mark in the whole thing, cause let's face it, we're not, we're not playing with our, you know, payroll here. We're playing with the city's payroll. And, uh, it's like getting a, a, a better free agent in football or something like that. You know you're locking up somebody good and you're not taking anything away from what we currently have, but I, I feel good with that.
Right, me too. So how much are we paying him then, if he accepts or are we deciding?
It's eighty-nine, seven eighty-seven.
That's what his will be?
Yep.
As a community director?
Yep.
Okay.
That is before the cafeteria plan, right?
That's correct.
So that's another seventeen-one on top.
Is it really? So we're what?
But he's getting that anyway.
Right.
Right. So we're at what, a hundred?
Well, with, with everything with benefits, it's probably gonna be somewhere around a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Good money, but I think he's a good guy, definitely.
So you have your direction then, Jack, satisfied?
Would you feel comfortable with us amending the city ordinance to reflect those changes that are in this report? So that that changes that city planner designation that's currently in there to community development director? And then entertaining a motion to hire Aaron for the position?
I mean, we're not, we don't do any business at work meetings, right?
No, no, you're just directing me. This would be on, uh, uh, the next council agenda with the one after that.
Why do we have to change the ordinance?
Because in the ordinance, it says.
Yeah, so it'll conform with the actual.
It'll, it'll conform with the title.
Oh, okay.
So it'll match his nameplate then?
Correct.
Okay.
The nameplate he already has.
Yeah, you can take, you can grind the inner. I got a bench grinder. I'll take care of it for you.
I'm fine with it. I don't know. Ask everybody else. I feel a lot better now.
So, yeah, sufficient direction then, Jack?
Correct. Okay, very good. Thank, thank you very much. I really appreciate that and I think we'll all benefit from it.
And thanks for understanding that.
Yeah, thanks for getting the question.
We're just doing our job, that's all.
Th- th- this is what we're all here for.
We're here to drive you nuts.
And if, if you don't ask the question.
I think I only made some progress.
Jim, I was already there, so you didn't have to go very far.
Then we didn't have protocol.
All right, on to item number six, ordinance review.
The East Bethel Planning Commission completes a review of the proposed changes to city ordinance appendix A zoning section twenty-eight architectural standards and appendix A zoning section twenty-four exterior storage at their May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three meeting. This review completed their initial work of the review that was discussed at their April twenty-fifth meeting. The existing architectural standard ordinance is exhibited as attachment one in your packet. The council's proposed changes are presented in attachments two and the commission's recommendations are shown in attachment three. The existing exterior ordinance is exhibited as attachment four. The existing exterior ordinance is exhibited as attachment four, council's proposed changes are presented in attachment five and the commission's. Recommendations are shown in attachment six. Should post-frame constructed buildings, and I use this term in lieu of pole barns. Or pole buildings, cause I think it's a much more apt description, I think pole barns. Give a negative image of the building, so I'm gonna call anything.
Imply livestock.
Post-frame construction, which is what generally it's referred to.
Yeah, yeah.
So, should post-frame constructed buildings be permitted in the highway sixty-five corridor, which I might add is an area that's three quarters of a mile on either side of highway sixty-five? Architectural standards for these type of structures should be developed to ensure minimum standards for their exterior appearance. Currently, we have our architectural standards that generally apply to everything, but if we do allow. Post-frame constructed buildings, do they need a basic separate set of standards? Amendments to these ordinance sections will require a properly noticed public hearing to be held prior to any consideration of approval to a regular council meeting. The planning commission, this is an addition or an update, will begin their review of ordinance changes for appendix A zoning section ten-four. Accessory storage containers at their June twenty-seventh, twenty-three meeting. Establish a question that city council review the recommendations of the planning commission as exhibited in attachments three and six. And determine if these are adequate as presented or require additional amendments and direct staff to proceed accordingly.
Discussion.
Now, essentially what these do, they keep, they kept in here, the planning commission's recommended that. Pole-type building materials are not permitted as primary exterior building materials. So, again, the EDA had some discussions about this and stated they recognized there was a place for these type buildings. And. Recommended that we look at either having. Certain zones or certain areas of the city designated for them. And/or develop their own standards so that they're gonna be kinda comparable with what's, what's been built. Uh, there are certain areas that, uh, maybe we want to just even eliminate those. Take like the classic commercial park where all the buildings are masonry, tilted up adorned concrete panels. Uh, and if you didn't have some type of standards in there, somebody could come up and put up a post-frame construction building that had a garage door, a front door and. No overhangs or anything and maybe kind of not fit in with what's there and maybe even devalue some of the investments some of those businesses have, but. From, from the way I look at this, I think this is something that can't be resolved and it may take another meeting or two. I personally would like to see this go back to the planning commission and have them look at where we can accommodate these type buildings and develop some standards for them.
I'd say that's the direction to go.
Well, if you could explain it like that, I've got no problem with, with. Protecting our brick and mortar sectoral businesses, tha- that's not an issue. The idea behind this was, was allowing those businesses up sixty-five, and I'll give you an example, uh. What is that closet store?
Rachel's Closet.
Rachel's Closet, yeah, yeah.
Now, you can take a look at that, that's a, that's a steel building. Uh, and it's done quite well. Uh, last time I was here, I handed out a bunch of pictures of, of other businesses.
Mm-hmm.
From, uh, that included lawyer's office, medical facilities, vets, a lot of service industry. It's designed to do one thing and one thing only. And if we can send it back with that understanding. I have no problem whatsoever sending it anywhere for that. Is that, are we trying to open up the door for new businesses going up the corridor? Or are we trying to not? Plain and simple, I mean, with the understanding that this could open up expansion. It can open up an av- uh, an avenue for new businesses to actually start. And not have to pay millions of dollars to build a building. Uh, the, the steel construction, as you know, it's stronger than concrete. If you do any homework on it, that, they do offer, uh, panels right now that have a thirty-year warranty on, on paint fade and chips. Which is a lot longer than you're gonna find on concrete, but it's designed to do one thing and it's an idea. Okay, I didn't say it was perfect, it's an idea to help businesses. Now, talking with businesses, and the ones we did talk to, said, you know, that's a pretty good idea. At the same time, I said, well, what do you think about if you were to build a pole? Style building or a steel building? Nobody said they'd put up a door, a big door and a, you know, painted sign on the side of it. They, they want it to look good and they want it to look professional, and that's where the city comes in. If we can come up with a plan that allows that to do that, so people or new businesses have an opportunity. To not stick everything they own into the building before they even get into it, with that building looks sharp. It's gonna, uh, work for them and allow other businesses who are currently here to expand. I'm all for it.
No, I, I, I agree a hundred percent, and it's been my thought that there's a place for everything here. And a need for different kinds, we just need to ensure that it's gonna kind of. Match everything that's going in and have some standards that we have to meet to make sure that it's gonna do that. But we all know too, that there's been tremendous advances in. Not only the construction materials, but the design alternatives you can have with these post-frame construction buildings now. And again, I think there's a place for them and I'd like to, but my personal recommendation as a city administrator. Would be to take this back to the planning commission, explain it more along these lines and see if we can come up with something and bring it back to you. And then go from there.
I'd like to see it, I mean, I'd like to see something done in this, I, I think it would be a good mix. I think it would be beneficial. I think it would, uh, basically open the door a little bit more for new businesses to come in that area. You can drive up sixty-five all day long and you can see a ton of different steel constructed buildings. Now, that being said, we, if we can control. Style front. Make it to conform to what we're looking for, but we still have to be willing to compromise a little bit. To give these new businesses or current businesses a chance to take advantage of the new technology that's out there with these buildings. And if that's the understanding, I have no pop, no problem with that whatsoever, no.
Well, let's see what they can do with, uh, some, maybe some new direction on this and go from there.
Yeah. So, send this back to planning with new direction and additional, uh, discussion requirements, call it?
Correct.
All right.
And it could be that. There's only so much you can do at a planning commission meeting, I think the one they had in April lasted four hours. If, if need be, this might need to be stretched over two more meetings. I wouldn't have any problem with that at all, cause I think if we're gonna do this, let's make sure we touch on everything and get it right.
Well, I've got two months stuck into it, so I mean, I got no problem. As long as they have the right direction of what they're looking for, and I, I think that's probably the fault. That we inquired before, okay, it was, it was a vague statement made, this is what we should use, okay? Uh, with some direction in it and being able to control what we want it to look like. And how we want it done. I think that's gonna help, cause we've got some people up there who are, are pretty, you know, business savvy and know what, you know, they wanna see also. So if we have the same vision. I, I don't think that, you know, it's gonna kick back and say, no, we're not gonna do this or that, I, I'm hoping they say, you know what, we can keep this corridor the way it is. Protect that business, now let's take a look at the next section. In the next section, what do we need to do to put in buildings like Rachel's Closet? What kind of, you know, uh, ordinances or rules are set in place for this type of building to go up so it looks like this? If we can do stuff like that, I think our corridor will look fantastic.
And we'll, we'll do some research on this, on what some other cities have done and what standards they've kinda come up with. Hopefully we can integrate those with some photographs to show exactly what we're talking about, cause a picture's worth a thousand words. But I think that this is something that needs to be. Looked at in depth because I don't think we want to limit. This to just one type of essentially building type in the city.
Correct.
And I think there's other options and I've seen some of these post-frame construction buildings that look fantastic.
I agree. Do you still have the pictures that Tim gave you?
You know, that was.
Or did you get a copy?
There was a copy left here, that was Monday night, and I had some personal family issues I wound up taking care of part of the day too. I don't have those pictures, is there any way you can send those to me electronically, you have those electronically?
Yes.
If you can just email those to me, that would be great.
Cause they were some good pictures that he had. And that, give that to the planning so they can understand what Tim was trying to get a point across.
Yeah, and some, and sometimes, you know, you, you realize that. Your vision or my vision and what I'm looking at when I describe these may not be what you're thinking of. And that comes down to clarity and is, you know, sending you these pictures, I, I think is gonna help because y- you're gonna see the vision. That I'm looking at when I see sixty-five. And I see new businesses coming in, and, and it's not a pole barn in a field with a spray painted sign on it.
Right.
I mean, they're done with class, they're done right, they're, they're structurally sound, they withstand any kind of weather.
And see, I think that's the image that needs to get conveyed.
Well, we're gonna take care of that, we'll get it to you.
So, you have sufficient, sufficient direction then, Jack?
Yes.
All right.
Then there's the second issue that they made some recommendations on, section twenty-four exterior storage. Uh, that's in your packet, uh, so. Is there any discussion or comments on those? I think the main consideration there really is that in all zones, exterior storage is permitted with a CUP. Doesn't matter what, you can have any standards you want, but you still have to get a conditional use permit for exterior storage. So, that means essentially these can be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. So, uh. The things that we've addressed here relating to numbers for size, height. To me are just guidelines because the CUP is gonna control exactly what happens with that.
All right.
So each of them businesses have CUPs now that have that exterior storage?
Some of them do, I'm sure, some of them don't, some are probably grandfathered in. Take for example, that, uh, designing or the, what's the buildings going in down at, uh, designed by. Or the one that's presented to planning commission that, that's got that big glass front.
Designing Earth?
Designing Earth.
Oh, that one, yeah.
They're, they're gonna have to get a, they, they'll be getting the conditional use permit for their exterior, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, cause they got a huge storage area.
Yeah, and they, they've got a big one and, you know, in, in that area, it fits in with what's going on there, everything's screened, everything's behind the building, it's not seen, so.
Right, cause they have them three lots in a row.
So, with, with all these, the CUP is really gonna control everything.
Okay, it'll be like you say, case by case?
Yes.
So we can get down, okay. I'm good.
All right. As long as you have sufficient direction, Jack, we'll move on to the next item. Item number seven, amendment to city code, section eighteen dash two forty, mobile food vendor units.
Each year, staff receives multiple requests for information regarding the regulation of permitting of food trucks within the city of East Bethel. Currently, there is not an applicable licensing process for allowing food trucks to operate within the city limits outside of the city-sponsored Booster Day event in July. City staff have reviewed food truck ordinance from surrounding cities, primarily St. Francis, Isani and Cambridge, and created a proposed addition. An amendment to our own ordinance sections that will allow the operation of food trucks in a safe and organized manner. Staff is requesting city council review the recommendation of staff as exhibited as attachment one in your packet. And determine if these are adequate as presented or require additional amendments and direct staff to proceed accordingly. Uh, what this is in your packet is the section eighteen forty is an entirely new section. The section on definitions, which is eighteen two thirty, is just an amendment defining what mobile food units are. So, essentially this does prevent them with those restrictions and conditions as indicated. In what would be a proposed ordinance and I'm just here to take any questions on that.
Is there, I don't believe so, but is there any time elimination? Or time period that we need to get this done by for Booster Day, or is this just a new?
This is just some, something we've, we've talked about doing for quite a while, but we never have gotten around, but. Since Booster Day was coming up and we said, let's just go ahead and just put this out there so we can start thinking about it.
Start talking. Okay.
So there wasn't anything in particular that kinda brought it to a head?
No, no. We have had, you know, requests for food trucks in the past and we've had to say no, you know, my, my biggest concern about food trucks is. Anything that we do, I think's okay, as long as we don't allow them to compete with storefront business. That would be direct competition because food trucks essentially don't pay any taxes. And they don't have the overhead that an existing owner has like a Route sixty-five Pub and Grub or Moonshine Whiskey or. Uh, and a restaurant that's in the city.
All right. Um, I did read through it, it, uh, looked pretty good. Uh, after council discussion, I'd still like to see it put in forward of, uh, the planning commission, just so we have multiple eyes on it.
I read through this too and. My concerns are that we don't really have much right now in ordinance for food trucks. And what I've read in here. I don't know if we'll have any food trucks if we start putting ordinances in like this. It's almost like another law for some business to operate, which we don't even use that many food trucks that often. I don't think we wanna scare away the people. That's my opinion of it, it's gonna cost the food truck drivers a lot of money, I don't know what they even have into their trucks now. But if you're gonna require all this other stuff, we might be chasing them away.
Well, and, and again, what we based this on is what our surrounding cities have done, and they seem to have no issues. With having those food trucks and complying with these regulations, so. I think it's important we have, and these things are becoming more popular, you know, it used to be you'd see somebody set up. Just selling something just for people to come in at lunchtime and pick something up. But now they're being used as catering events for graduations, for big parties, and I even saw one that was used for a funeral, so.
I, I just saw one in the, uh, local Facebook that says, I have a seventy-five person event, I looking for a barbecue food truck, any recommendations?
So does that mean they couldn't come in East Bethel right now and do that?
Correct.
Except when we allowed it for Booster Day?
Yeah, we made, there's, there's an exception though for Booster Day, since it's a city-sponsored event.
Except if you're a caterer, correct?
If you have a catering license, that's correct, you're exempt too.
Do you have an idea of what the license or city permit is gonna be?
We haven't done that, but, uh, we probably look and see what I, what the other cities are charging and keep it consistent with that.
One of my earliest memories in life is going with my father to get a hot dog. At a thing called Wee Willie's Weenie Wagon. That's no joke, I mean, like from four or five years old. And that would have been a mobile food unit, for sure.
Sure would be.
The only thing that, uh, that comes along with those things is traffic.
Yeah.
Uh, conditions and, and personnel, people gathering around it, what all, but aside from that, they're. They are becoming more popular. Be nice to have a Wee Willie's in, Jim, you wanna kick in a couple of grand with me, we'll open one up, what do you think?
It's not gonna be a push one, is it?
No, yeah, hook to a, hook to a bicycle, yeah. Uh, so, so, uh, what, what, what if anything do we, else do we need to do regarding this?
I had the recommendation that we send this to the planning commission for their, their inputs, so we can do that.
Agree with that.
All right, any other discussion on it? Moving on to item eight, communications survey results report.
Let me get this pulled up here, just to start it running.
Sure.
At the recommendation of city council and council member Louis. Staff developed a short survey regarding methods of communication from the city of East Bethel. And how residents receive news and information about what is happening in the city. This survey was launched in April and was available for responses through May twenty-sixth. Although the survey was created for online responses, efforts were made to make the survey accessible to all, since not all citizens may have access to complete the survey online. The survey was promoted on the city's website and was sent out to the email subscriber list for the Newsflash module. It was also promoted to Springtown Hall meeting and in the city newsletter and was communicated that it was available in paper form if individuals preferred this response method. In total, seventy-six sponsors, responses were received. Although the response rate is only a small portion of our population, the feedback provided is sufficient to draw conclusions and provide recommendations to improve communications among citizens. Questions included in the survey allowed residents to provide feedback on the city's current communication efforts with citizens and recommendations for improvement. It targeted the specific methods of communication, type of information is provided and requested community engagement and additional suggestion. Staff is requesting city council review the results of the communications survey as exhibited in attachment one and displayed here on our screen and determine how to best utilize the response and or implement the suggestions presented and direct staff to proceed accordingly. One thing I'd like to point out, uh, there's five questions on it, you know, one of them was asked, do you live in East Bethel? I think Carrie communicated the answer just to you, there were seventy-six responses. There was only one that doesn't live in East Bethel and that was Carrie and she did the test run on it, so essentially this was a complete East Bethel response.
At least we know she's truthful.
Yeah.
One of the things that's interesting to note is how often do you visit the city of East Bethel website? And eighty-eight point two percent visit the website only a few times a month or less, so that shows that our website's not being utilized. Hopefully, like we hope it would be, to be able to disseminate a lot of information. Also, uh, the top three comments on this were, uh, there's a request to send a newsletter more frequently, we've discussed this as a paper copy form. If it is to be sent more frequently, we'd like to explore hopefully the way to do it electronically. But I don't know if that's gonna reach everybody. Electronically would be much easier to do, it could be produced faster, cheaper, and we could actually send out monthly reports too. But we gotta figure out how to make sure that residents recognize that it's available in that form and for them to be able to access it.
Do you have a, an existing relationship or someone in the city have one with a communications consultant who works with municipalities on their communications programs?
I don't, but we can reach out for some assistance maybe on that to see if we can kinda pick some people's minds on how we could figure that out.
Yeah.
Because I agree that the, the main issue, one of the biggest challenges we have is communicating with our residents.
Oh yeah, I think it's the same in every city in the country.
And, and that, that's not unique, but we, we need to figure out the way to service ours, every, every place is a little different, so. And one of the best sources we have is the website, we just gotta figure out how to utilize it better.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the other interesting items to point out is that, uh, people want more public meetings, uh, which was one of the other things they requested to do. And I don't know if it was defined exactly as far as public meetings go, we have about seventy-six of them a year counting all the city council meetings, the work meetings, the town hall meetings, the LBA and E meetings and thirty-six scheduled commission committee meetings. Uh, I don't know if they wanted more of the town hall type meetings, but generally what we've experienced with the town hall type meetings, and I think the town hall is, meeting's a great concept, but it's generally the same people that show up all the time, you know, there's not a whole lot of change in the demographics of the audience. So, we've got to figure out some things on that side. And the other thing is people were wanting more information on development projects and summaries and updates on public works programs, which I totally agree with, you know, we can focus that on the website, but we still gotta get people to come back and look at the website. But anyway, here are the summaries of the survey, again, seventy-six responses.
It seems to me it would be worth spending a few dollars to get some professional experienced counseling on how to approach this. I'm not a web designer, I asked Carrie about it, I thought she had done the work on the city website, cause she's kind of a cyber whiz. And you guys had somebody else work on it, I think they did a good job, I think it's a.
Actually, we had a citizen committee group that did most of the work, but a group called Civic Plus is the one that actually put it all together.
Yeah.
But thi- this is something that I'd like to present to the EDA and this would be maybe a good use of some of their funds to direct us to see, to see what we need to do, how we can improve communications.
I agree.
Because that all results to better quality of life, economic development and everything, so. I'd like to present this to the EDA and get their feedback from it and some recommendations from there.
Definitely support that.
Yep, I was gonna suggest that because it also slightly goes hand in hand with the Business Retention and Expansion Program that, uh, uh, once we go through all the surveys, we have groups that break out as to address issues that we find and I believe communications with jobs was one of the aspects last time and this can especially be addressed further with the work that they do with that.
Yeah.
And, you know, here's some significant information is, you know, what source do you prefer when seeking information about the city of East Bethel and the question, the, the options were check all that apply and as you can see, the highest number was the city newsletter. So, apparently the city newsletter and we know that's one thing that gets to all of our residents.
Right.
And the trick is electronically, how do we get it to a majority of the residents, so. Uh, we're short from a, for answers now, but I agree that this is probably where we need a little consulting help or just some.
And it's also good cause it promotes businesses that advertise in it too.
That's correct.
Very, very focused advertising.
Yeah, and, and it is focused on the city itself.
Yeah.
Uh, the city website was used as, as, as another source, it was the second highest one. And social media or Facebook and Nextdoor accounts were the other ones.
This is the one on, on the social media, I know the city has a Facebook site, that's a data dump site.
Mm-hmm.
But I wonder if there's a, if it's okay, I don't know, I'm not in that business. That's where having somebody who works with municipalities, if it's possible for the city to post things on other people's Facebooks, social media sites, just informationally, not interactively, but just either through the, through the person who runs the site or directly, uh, as a way to spread it out more.
Yeah, I, I think if they're willing to accept those posts, there's nothing wrong with doing that.
Yeah, yeah.
So we.
But the people who are in that business know the clever things to do, I certainly don't.
We can reach out to some of those ones that we know that are existing and do, there's three or four of them that are probably active in the city and reach out to that direct audience.
The same goes for the newspaper to the extent people watch that, if they're, if they're finished beating up on us for a while, maybe they could.
Well, you know.
Some other stuff.
If you look at it here, local newspapers is, is a source that very few people utilize.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, with, with the Anoka Union, it's our official paper, but it has a very limited actual printed publication and most of it, to get it, I think it probably has more online subscribers now than it does paper copies. But as we all know, newspapers are a dwindling source, people refer less and less to them for their information, but everything should be utilized as much as possible to, this is where we're gonna hit most all the people that we need to attract.
You know what concerns me when I see newsletter mailed, one point three percent. Now we're gonna do mailing on Nexus, that's scary.
Well, thi- thi- this is actually a little bit.
Yeah, but that one person will be really motivated when they show up.
This is a little, this is a little confusing and I don't have the thing in front of me, but I did ask Carrie what that was today. She said there was another option to this and this probably wasn't, the directions weren't read. So she said, really, we could just disregard that because it really wasn't
Oh.
related or the answers didn't relate to what the question was, so.
So it's even less.
Well, where are the ones that Jim delivered?
The what?
The ones that you delivered.
It'll be higher than that.
So, you know, seventy-six responses is, you know, it's less than one percent of the city's pop, response rate, but.
How many surveys were sent out?
Se- seventy-six responses.
They, they, they were, they were, this is mostly online, but people wanted to do paper copies, they could send in, we'd send them a paper copy to do it. We didn't do a direct mailing on this. But I thought some of this is interesting too, but you know, the city newsletter is one where people get a lot of their, a lot of their, their information, which verified what we suspected.
Yeah, and I, I think it argues for there being six a year and so forth.
Right, right.
And.
Maybe a little thinner, maybe a little leaner, not, fewer met council articles, there's, you know, abstract articles, just focused on East Bethel.
And you know, what we can do on those, I think we can probably cut down some on the printing costs.
Yeah.
The mailing cost is probably not gonna change much, but like you say, make them a two-page and maybe even have something come out monthly.
Yeah.
You know, so, so, some months.
Yeah, that's what they do in Ham Lake, the Ham Laker comes out every month and.
Does it?
Yeah.
They, they, they hire somebody to do that one though, so.
Well, we might have to contract it too.
And, and you know, tha- that's a distinct possibility because to get it.
That's what some, I mean, that's what businesses do, the.
To come out.
A lot of people are millionaires because they provide services to business and it doesn't, or it's, they're in that gray zone between it makes sense for them to have a person on staff or it doesn't, and they should contract that out. And that's, you know, so I, I'm, I'm all for renting talent if you, you can't justify buying it, you know.
I think to get it out at that frequency, that's probably what we'd have to do to get some product out that's worthy.
Carrie's, Carrie's already a pretty busy girl, so.
And, you know, we, we would still have to provide the content, but we'd just send it to them, they'd assemble it and then they'd mail it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think that's very doable, something we need to, to investigate. Uh, the other interesting part of this chart is what, which types of city news and information would you like to see the city share more of? And, you know, we've got alerts and notifications, upcoming community development projects, uh, meeting and public hearing notices, upcoming public works projects is, you know, it's the second highest one out there, which I think is good that we have a, a thing that notifies people as much in advance where we're gonna be working so that they can see what's going on. These won't be timely enough like next day, so you know there's gonna be maybe a lane or road closed, but it's gonna be something that they can get a little bit more feel for what's happening in the city. Code enforcement issues, elections, of course generally that's gonna be just every other year, but these are what people were looking for that they'd like to see more of too, so.
And you kinda weave them together, so you're referring people to the city webpage for updates on exactly these things you say you care about.
That, tha- that's.
That there'll be updates there for you to.
That, that's correct and the more, the more people we can start maybe getting to use the city website, then the more effective a tool that's gonna be for communications.
In the long run, it should be the primary tool for all accounts, yeah.
So, does anybody have any questions on this survey?
Well, since it was my idea, I'm gonna say it was tremendously valuable and I'm glad we did it.
Thank you, Kevin. So, what, what I'm gonna do is bring, bring this up to the EDA and review it with them and we'll get some recommendations and you know, if we have to do something, we've got money in that budget that we can use for consulting fees.
Yep, yep.
Alright, thank you, Jack, item number nine, code enforcement report.
Uh, thank you, Brian. One eighty-one Bryant Lane, uh, this is a property we've discussed for probably two decades. Uh, the violations on this property are excessive junk throughout the yard, accessory storage container, illegal fence and vehicle violations. The violations with this owner have continued over a period of at least fifteen years and that's probably conservative estimate. The owner failed to show up for his pre-trial hearing and a warrant has been issued in this matter and is still outstanding. Uh, I think the only resolutions of this case are to take actions that would be extremely controversially and potentially very expensive. I don't look for any resolution on it really soon, but, and it may never happen until certain other events occur, so. This is one we'll just keep monitoring, but I don't expect to see any results on it. I'm not very confident in this one, the courts can't handle this one.
Um, yeah.
So. Forty-six thirty-one Viking Boulevard, uh, the owner has not made any progress to resolve the violations of working without permits on the home on this property. AMPCA Septic System Compliance Inspection is required before any building permits can be issued for the outstanding violation of working without permits. The city has offered the owner the following as a means to resolve the matter. Number one, complete the Septic System Compliance Certification and any subsequent improvements that may be necessary to comply with the regulations, this requirement. Obtain the permits required for the work that was done without permits. Have licensed contractors that performed the work or other licensed contractors sign off on the jobs. And have a certified building official approve and sign off on the unpermitted work that was done on the home. Issuance of citations are pending on this case upon the review of the property information and history provided to council members. Councilperson Smith is working with the property owner on this matter.
I haven't got a hold of her yet, I'm gonna be working with her shortly now that we got the ordinance changed with this Septic System situation. And we'll get it figured out and we'll bring it back. To you and, uh, Nick, I'm thinking we'll have a meeting with, if it's okay with council. Or we can bring it to the council, however you guys wanna handle it, once we get the information.
If you wanna just bring it and then that way we can meet, it's not, it's us and two, three council members and we can come up with a report and a recommendation then.
Alright.
One nine four, one nine trioc circle. The owner pled guilty to working without building permits and received probation. Revocation to probation is contingent on meeting the conditions of the court. Mr. Kraft still remains in violation of impervious surface standards, the number of accessory and the number of accessory structures on the lot. These issues are a separate enforcement matter from the work done without building permits. As to the other violations, Mr. Kraft has been issued his third citation for non-compliance and his property will be re-inspected on June fifth, two thousand twenty-three, which was today and which could not be done, it's been rescheduled for later this week. Uh, although the attachment to the garage was removed a few weeks ago, we got this report from his neighbor, there was a little work done. The slab that was poured for the attachment is still in its place. If the inspection shows there's been no additional movement towards compliance, these outstanding violation will be turned over to his probation officer in the court. Three two three, three, two hundred and twenty-seventh lane. Property owners have been cited for allowing people to live in an accessory building and for illegal work done without proper permits. Citations were first issued in September of twenty-one and no progress has been made to resolve the violations. As the owners have made no effort to resolve the violations, this case was given to the city attorney for court resolution. Pre-trial has been delayed and the city recommended no continuance of this issue be considered, but the judge has granted brief continuance of hearings, one that was for April fifth has been continued. The defendant's attorney continues to represent that she is trying to schedule a meeting with the city to make a plan on the civil side of this issue. If there's no resolution, it would be scheduled for trial. As with any court case at this stage, the final outcome will ultimately be up to the judge. Once the owners hired an attorney, continues, continue to be granted with the stipulation that the owners will obtain building permits for the work completed. The building official and electrical inspector are met with the owners to schedule verification that work was done to code. So we do anticipate that they're going to open up certain sections of that so that those inspections can be made. A meeting was held with the Anoka County Sheriff's Office to determine what could be done regarding investigation of claims the structure was being used as a habitable address. The Anoka County Sheriff's Office indicated unless there was probable cause, they couldn't enter the property to inspect it and more or less that their hands were pretty well tied on this unless they had absolute reason to enter the property. One of the things would be is if there were mailing addresses besides the owner at this structure that's in question and certain other things, so we met with. So we met with Lieutenant Peters and Investigator Beck and Chan and Gene Stowell. And Aaron and I met with them about a month ago. And the sheriff's department said, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do on these complaints. You know, if you see somebody there, they can go there and say, you know, we're just staying here. But they said, you know, just keep an eye out on it. I'll, don't be afraid to call in and we'll tell you if we can come or not, so.
I was under the impression that, that had been vacated. You know, that the, not, I, I'm using a legal term. I don't mean it that way. I mean that the people who were staying there hadn't stopped staying.
Well, tha- that's what we suspect too, but you know, there were still, we know at one time there were some people probably living there.
But that's stopped, right?
That's apparently stopped, yes. The, the issue now is the work done without permits, so that, that's proceeding to be checked. And hopefully we'll have a, an update on that here in the next two or three weeks.
Has the uh, it states the defendant's attorney continues to represent that she is trying to schedule a meeting with the city. Has there been any contact to um, set a meeting up?
She has not met with us, or the attorney has not met with us, but we did meet uh, the elect, Nick and Mr. Sloth, the electrical inspector, were out there a little over a week ago to meet with the contractors to go over what needed to be done. To open whatever it was up that they need to see on the plumbing and the electrical. That's all that's been done except for them requesting continuances on this.
So they did inspect it?
They haven't done it yet, but they, they outlined to the contractor what they needed to see.
So is the homeowner, are they complying or are they fighting that?
Uh, they're not fighting that, no. They're, they're gonna go along with it.
So maybe we can get that resolved without court, maybe?
Hopefully so. Two two eight, seven nine Staples Street. One of the reasons I stepped out earlier is Mr. and Mrs. DeWitt were here. So I wanted to explain to them what was revealed in the inspection today. These property owners have been charged for ordinance violations relating to vehicles, junk and public nuisance. The case was on the court docket for March first, two thousand twenty-three. The owner applied for a public defender, was denied by the court and is representing himself. He spoke with the city attorney about resolving the case, but was informed by the city attorney there could be no out of court resolution until the violations are resolved to satisfaction of the city. The city attorney requested the court to set a jury trial date. The court proposed to set a June trial date, but given the age of the case, the city attorney asked the court to schedule the jury trial at their next available opening. The court granted the request for April nineteenth, but this was continued beyond April nineteenth. And I think the next date is on the July court docket. As there's been no compliance progress at this date, and this date was last Thursday, Mr. DeWitt's case has now been set for the July court session. However, we didn't inspect the property today. I personally went out there and looked at it. And there's been quite a bit of work done since their previous inspection of last week. So they are making progress. So I called them outside and I said, look, you're making progress. That's what we wanna do. We wanna work with you. And if we can keep this thing out of court, it's to everybody's benefit. So I, I, I think they've done quite a bit of work. There's still a lot of work to do. They can't get it done overnight. I told them we understood that, but we would work with them as long as they're making progress on this case.
Good. I see they moved the school bus to the front now.
Yeah, the school bus has moved to the front, yeah. But they, they've cleaned up a lot of stuff. They've hauled a lot of stuff away, so I, I think we're making some progress here, so.
Are these the same people that that letter was about? Same last name? Well, whatever happened with that?
Excuse me?
Did, did the sheriff's department get involved on that letter?
They, they did, but they have produced no results from anything. They haven't, they haven't found anything, so. They did do extra patrols there and checked around, but there wasn't any indication that they saw of anything that was happening. Seven twenty-six, one hundred and ninety-second avenue. The ordinance violation on this property is for parking a commercial vehicle on a residential property. This matter has been ongoing since two thousand eighteen. The case was turned over to the city attorney. An offer was made to the owner for resolution of the matter. If there's no progress on the offer of resolution, this will be moved to trial at the next hearing on August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Three one one one, one hundred and eighty-second avenue. This property owner has been issued three citations for operating a business out of his home without IUP and excess vehicle violations. If there are no efforts toward compliance for the next inspection, which is tomorrow, the case will be turned over to the city attorney for prosecution. Again, this is one we'll reach out to again too, to see if there's any hopes for them coming into compliance. Again, the last thing we wanna do is take this to court, because when it gets in court, it seems to get lost in the whole labyrinth of the legal process.
Is that a mechanical services business?
I'm not exactly sure what that is, but there is a lot of storage of containers, trucks on the property, but uh, you know, hopefully we can work with him, get something resolved to get him to take care of this. Again, our intention on all these is to get a resolution. Going to court's the last thing we wanna do.
I wanna make a suggestion on these two is before we do the court thing, or even when we start the violation part of it, I don't know what steps there is to do on this. But I'd like to have council involved before we decide even to get a hold of the attorney. So we know everything about it, that every step has been made to help. So we're not wasting more money with the attorney for, you know, wasting residents' money. I would just suggest that because there's a lot that we don't know. And we can just bring it up at a council meeting or whatever, say, hey, we've got some issues here.
We can assemble those, and again, though, the, on the prosecution side, we just pay a flat fee, no matter if we prosecute. One case or fifteen. But I will be more than happy to present those when we hit the three citation mark to present that, to get any feedback.
We gotta process like a three.
After, after three citations, then we normally just turn it over.
Yeah, if you just can keep us in the loop, that'd be great.
Could we go back to the first one, one eighty-one Bryant? Seeing as how that's less than two hundred yards from my house, I have a vested interest in it. What, so I s- I see where we stand, but uh, what if any steps do you think are possible moving forward? Are you just like, throw up your hands and it's, it's a lost cause or what?
Well, there's a couple of ways to address it, but I don't know if we wanna do that. It's like.
How aggressive do you wanna be?
How aggressive do we wanna be in that process is abatement and assessment, which mean the city cleans it up.
Gives them a bill.
And then assesses it back to his property taxes.
Right, okay. All right, well, I'll make this commitment to the, to the group and I know the person. And I, I will uh, go over there and try to find him home and talk to him about it. And just let him know that it's, it's come down to this and that's the next step. And I don't want to uh, see it, see it go that way, but the fact is, you know, this whole, this whole thing we talked about, or I talked about, any way of, you know, freedom of enjoyment, you know, peaceable enjoyment of your property and all that, but when you start impacting everybody around you, it's, it's not good. And there's one right across the street from his place that's no jewel either, so I'm sure that'll, that'll come up down the road. But at least, at least I'll get started with that one. I've been kinda slack about it because he used to be a friend and you know, you don't like having to bring that kind of news to him, somebody who's, you know, has, has challenges in life, so. But I will do that.
If you need any support, I'll go with you.
And what I need is a Kevlar vest, that's what I mean.
Maybe invite Jack to go out there with you, if you do that.
Yeah, well, I'll, since I know him, I'll, I'll go first instead of asking anybody else to put themselves at risk or anything and uh, but I'll go talk to him first and see if I can make any progress at all and I'll report back to you guys.
Let Jack know at least when you'll.
Oh, this gentleman has a tractor trailer that he parks on city streets. And sometimes in his yard and those are prohibited. So what we talked about to him was, you know, we'll work with you. He's got a fairly large shed on his building. He was talking about tearing it down and making it big enough to park his vehicle in there. To date, he hadn't followed through with it. We told him, you know, that's perfectly fine with us, but we need to see you do something. Start within a year. And he came back and said, nah, two years, maybe three. And we said, no, we need, we need to work, get this resolved as soon as possible. We're still talking to him, but that's the issue.
You need a motion to?
One last motion if we're done. Jack, did you have anything more?
Uh, no, I just wanna know if any, as, as everybody knows, Tim Marion has resigned from his mayor's position. And at the next meeting, there will be, the process started to declare a vacancy for that position, fill that vacancy. And at the same time, we'll have to declare a vacancy if one of the existing council members is appointed mayor to fill a vacancy for a council seat. Either way, there's gonna be a vacancy that has to be declared. So typically what was done the last time this issue came up is that the city council decided to appoint one of their own members. They voted on it as the mayor. So once that was done, then the mayor took off, the council member that was sitting took office as the mayor. Then that seat was declared vacant. The city council took applications for the position, interviewed the applicants and then made an appointment for the remaining term of that city council seat. So that's basically the process.
Richard Lawrence?
Correct.
And Bob DeRoche?
Bob DeRoche was on the council and he was appointed the mayor. So generally, that's how that process could work. There's other things you could do too, but I think that's probably the most straightforward and the most expedient one.
So we can do that at the next council meeting?
Yes, that'll be the first thing on the agenda.
We have to accept the resignation first?
Yeah, you have to accept the resignation and then declare the seat vacant. And then proceed with the appointment. The other option is, you know, to take applications and, but I think probably it's gonna come from somebody sitting here.
Well, yeah. Okay, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for coming.